Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Looks like we're waiting for Director Alvarado. Let's give him another minute here. Join us. Send a message. Join us. Let's. Thank you. Let's go ahead and call the meeting to order. It is June 22nd. It is 5:33. And I'll call this meeting to order. Madam Court, if you can, please take the role.
Thank you, Director Alvarado. We're still waiting for him. So we'll start with Director King Meredith.
Here.
Director Weiner. Vice President Sudditt.
Yes, ma'am.
President Cepeda.
Here.
Do we have a quorum?
All right. Thank you very much. Okay, now is the time for public comment for items not on the agenda. Madam Court, did we receive any written comments or are there any members of the public that wish to make comments at tonight's meeting?
I did receive a written comment. It was attached to the agenda packet, but I can, I will also read that out. And I will begin now. This is from Speaker Gordon, Public Speaker Gordon.
Brenda, I think this was for items not on the agenda, correct?
Oh, excuse me. So we did not receive any public comment for items not on the agenda. If there are any of our attendees that would like to speak under items not on the agenda, if you can please raise your hand. Seeing none raised, we have no public comment at this time for items not on the agenda.
Thank you, Madam Court. All right, seeing that there's no public comments, then we will begin tonight's meeting with this statement from our general manager. A brief overview from the General Counsel, Ms. Claire Collins, and then we'll take any questions, comments from the board. And you know, one thing to remember, we're going to have Vice President Sudditt be our parliamentarian. As Vice President Sudditt, are you ready to be our parliamentarian?
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you. And then we want to make sure that we keep our code of conduct and decorum at all times during the meeting. I want to make sure that we give everyone ample time to be able to speak. And Vice President or Director Weiner, there'll be an opportunity for you to speak as well during and specifically during the agenda item that has to do with your censorship. But I want to make sure that we're all respectful of each other. Vice President Sudditt, if you can keep us to any time, as we get closer to the agenda item, we'll see how much time we may need and then we'll start a clock. We don't want to be here all night, but we want to make sure that everyone has a fair amount of time to be able to speak. So with that there, I am going to pass it over to our general manager to provide a statement.
Thank you, President Sudditt. Good evening, everyone. Lisa Malik Zadeh, General Manager, and I have a brief statement I want to just read if you'll give me a moment. Over the past, oh, and before I start, I wanted to acknowledge and thank, we have, you'll see several people on the call this evening. The good portion, the majority of those are the leadership of West County Wastewater, and they are here as a demonstration to the board and to the public of their commitment in concern about what is, what is being discussed this evening. And I want to thank each of them for showing up this evening and being here to support that and discussion. And, you know, certainly if they have some comments, they'll share those. But I did just want to acknowledge and thank them all for, for being here. So with that, over the last few years, the staff at West County Wastewater have been working diligently towards transforming our culture into a more thoughtful, inclusive, and accepting one where people feel respected and valued and can thrive. We continue to move forward toward that goal and are doing so while taking on some significant and innovative environmentally targeted projects. It hasn't been easy. We've brought on consultant coaches and trainers to help us learn how to model our values of trust, accountability, leadership, and collaboration in our work and in our behavior. We participate in reality-based training which looks at how we lead, communicate, and treat each other. We're looking at things differently, shifting away from venting, learning to manage our ego, find new ways to identify and solve differences, and taking responsibility if we cause harm intentionally or unintentionally by breaking our values. We're learning to manage our time better, stick to agendas, and allow less time for negativity. So we have more time to tackle the projects and goals you've set for us and that we're proud to reach. Our public-facing leaders elected to represent the community remind us often from the dais that we are taking the correct steps, making good decisions, and our efforts are being seen and appreciated. The video played at last week's committee felt like a setback. We were shocked and taken aback by the tone of message. A video which emphasized the climate change problem while also alluding to the idea that we're not doing enough and are essentially doomed was disappointing, hurtful, and embarrassing for many West County staff who watched the meeting. It made us collectively look at the work we are so proud of. Our Clean and Green Project, which is set to reduce greenhouse gas emissions by 90%, generate renewable electricity, provide solar energy, energy, and save our ratepayers money. Our early involvement in the Living Levy Project, which will protect the West County Wastewater Plant and surrounding area from sea level rise, as well as protect the shoreline, preserve the habitats of species, and provide ecological enhancements. What about staff's work to reach out to our community businesses and beyond on pollution prevention issues? We've asked you to sign letters of support for legislation to keep harmful chemicals and products out of the waterways and sewer systems. This is done for one central theme, the health and sustainability of our environment, earth, and climate. We've already apologized for presenting a vulgar and inappropriate video, not in any way a representation of what West County and staff believe or work for, raising the issue of climate change in such a coarse, hostile, and offensive way is an absolute disservice and an insult to the work we do every day. It may feel like a setback, but we are resilient, committed, and invested in changes, projects, and differences we make. We won't let it set us back. I want to thank the leadership of this organization who have been supportive, willing, and strong. I also want to thank and recognize all employees of West County Wastewater who have stood ready and willing to do the right things, put in the hard work, and be brave enough to evolve. Thank you.
This is General Manager for those comments. With that, Ms. General Counsel Collins, hand it over to help us lead the discussion here.
All right, thank you, Mr. President. To be clear, because, because the item hasn't actually been called yet, is that our, our item on the agenda is the censure to review the terms of Director Harry Weiner's Censure Resolution Number 2021-15 to evaluate his compliance with that censure resolution and recent actions and consider a further censure. This special meeting was called by Acting President Sudditt last week following a video presentation made by Director Weiner at the Infrastructure Operations and Environment Committee, which the general manager just alluded to. That video, in addition to discussing climate change issues, contained multiple instances of profanity and is available for viewing on the WCW website. We also have a transcript of that if you're interested. As this board will recall, Director Weiner is currently under censure, and Acting President Sudditt at last week's meeting requested that the general manager provide a summary of any violations by Director Weiner of his censure. That was forwarded to me, and following a review of that summary and in consultation with the President and Vice President, I prepared the draft resolution attached to the agenda for this board's consideration tonight. As described in the recitals to that resolution, Director Weiner's current censure resolution prohibits him from directly communicating with staff and under the ethics policy, as well as the board policies and procedures, he, as well as all the other members of this board, are expected to uphold certain levels of decorum. The purpose of the meeting tonight is for the board to discuss and determine whether Director Weiner has violated the terms of his current censure or the ethics policy or board policies and procedures, and if so, whether to further censure Director Weiner and/or impose additional restrictions on his activities as a member of the board or representative of the district. In terms of procedure, I recommend that the board first consider what the standard of conduct is for both the existing censure and then determine if that was violated. Then consider what the standard of conduct is under our policies, our ethics and board policies, and then determine whether that was violated. I recommend that Director Weiner be allowed a reasonable time to participate in this discussion, as will every other member of the board, and that he be afforded adequate time to provide for his defense. I recommend that the president, following a discussion of each item, number one, call for a vote as to whether the board finds that Director Weiner has violated the terms of his censure, and then two, call for a vote as to whether the board finds that Director Weiner has violated the ethics policy. If the board determines that either or both have been violated, then that would be reflected as a finding as described in the recitals of the proposed resolution. Following the board's making of findings, which are determinations of fact, the board then may consider whether to adopt any of the proposed statements of censure or restrictions proposed in the draft resolution. It is the president's prerogative as to how to conduct this discussion on each of the proposed items. However, I would propose that the board vote on each individual item of the resolution. As we walk through the resolution, the board may also propose alternative language or actions for consideration. If at any time the board requests a definition of any of the terms we are using, such as censure, or civility, or decorum, or descriptions of what's in the policies or the censure resolution, I am ready, willing, and able to answer those questions or to provide any advice as the board requests. However, in all events, the president is the chair of this meeting, and he may set reasonable parameters for the orderly conduct of this meeting, or may delegate that role to the parliamentarian. I will have available for display on screen tonight copies of the proposed resolution, the prior censure, the general manager's memo, as well as describing or displaying any definitions of, that you may ask for. That was a lot, and thank you for indulging me, Mr. President, and members of the board. However, that concludes my remarks at this time, and I'm happy to answer any questions, or we can move into whether or not we have any public statements now or after the board makes statements and deliberates.
Thank you, Madam General Counsel. Madam Court, did we receive any public comments for this particular item?
We did. We received one comment, and I will read that public comment into record now. That comes from Public Speaker Gordon. And the time starts now. As a longtime member of this organization, I have seen several iterations of staff members, leadership members, and board members. I have also witnessed and been part of many cultural changes. I've been part of this organization when the board and management wouldn't give staff members the time of day when it came to deciding the culture and direction of the organization. I've been part of this organization when the environment was extremely toxic, and it was very hard to get up and come to work every day. I've also been part of this organization when the pendulum shifted from that toxic environment to where it is today, a place I love and I'm glad to be a member of. I was part of the team along with other willing staff members that fought to hold this place together when it was falling apart. Through the rough times, there was confusion, doubt, and other negative emotions that staff members felt as the organization went through the transformation. It was hard, but we made it. We are now a thriving place with a progressive and inclusive culture that thrives in planning and completing forward-thinking projects that will cut down on spills and decrease our carbon footprint on the environment. With the vision of the general manager and guidance of the executive leadership team, staff developed the core values that most members of the organization live by today. The organization has grown, and new staff members are thriving and helping us develop and complete the aggressive goals of this organization. As staff members continue to thrive and grow, certain members of the board seem to have their own agenda. Some of the antics during board meetings have just simply been embarrassing. If staff can come together, put their differences aside to make WCW the great place it is, why can't the board? And now I will move to comments from our attendees. If any of our attendees can speak under public comment, please raise your hand. I do see some hands raised. We will start with, I will unmute Yolanda Young Adisa.
Excuse me, before she begins speaking, Madam Court, will you please announce how long each speaker has to speak?
Yes, thank you. And just as a reminder, each public speaker has three minutes, and the time will begin when you begin speaking. Speaker Young Adisa.
Thank you so much for the opportunity. Hello, my name is Yolanda Young Adisa, and I am honored to speak as a diversity, equity, and inclusion consultant for West County Wastewater District. As a clinical social worker, a psychotherapist associate, and a longtime advocate for social justice, I am honored for the opportunity to work on behalf of a district whose mission and values align with my own. In particular, the vision of the general manager, Lisa Malik Zadeh, and the district's executive leadership team offers an extraordinary opportunity to work with those that are seeking to transform this workplace and the local community through courageous, creative, and compassionate leadership. During my time here in my role as a consultant, I have joined the leadership's effort to integrate excellence with real-world experience and active regard for the employees, staff, and the neighbors of this wonderful community. This body of excellence is continually shaped by a commitment to integrate an exceptional regard for diversity, equity, and inclusion by way of being mindful of these three important aspects. I ask all of us to really reflect on them together and what it means in light of tonight's meeting. Communication. By our words and actions, we make visible the district's ongoing work in the areas of diversity, equity, and inclusion. And it's not just a box that we check because we attended a DEI compliance workshop, but instead, it's our daily commitment to justice by way of our words and our deeds. I ask that we identify what we are currently doing to promote an inclusive and equitable workplace experience for all members of our community. I also ask that we look for ways to improve our effectiveness in being a more inclusive and equitable workplace and community by way of our leadership and by way of ensuring equitable resources for the workplace and the community that we serve. I encourage each of you to consider tonight your role, your voice, and how to honor your commitment to this vision, this mission, these goals, and the opportunity that each of us have as we consider what it really means to embody DEI, diversity, equity, and inclusion. And as we stand together tonight.
Ms. Young Adisa, your time is up, so if you could wrap up, please.
Absolutely. As we are here together, I just encourage all of us to do our due diligence, to align with the standards of conduct that have been adopted by the policies of this district, and with our commitment to embody civility by way of honoring diversity, equity, and inclusion. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next speaker, I will unmute Speaker Angela Andrews.
Thank you.
And you have three minutes, and the timer will begin when you speak.
Okay. First, I want to thank the West County Wastewater Board of Directors and to our executive leadership team for fostering an environment for our staff to be open with our comments. I have always felt welcome by the board when presenting information to you and the public. Although I believe it did come from a place of creating a sense of urgency, the video that played last week's, at last week's committee meeting was disappointing. Many of the projects our general manager listed, including the Clean and Green Project, my team works on. We not only work hard on these projects because it is our job, but also because we care about our community. And many of us have young children, and we feel that our efforts are for them and for their future. Thank you again, and I feel that as what we always do is try to find a path forward and continue to work hard for this district. Thank you.
Thank you. And third speaker is Speaker Jeff. You have been unmuted, and whenever you're ready, the three minutes will start. Jeff, are you there?
There you are. I'm unmuted now. Can you hear me?
I can hear you.
Okay, so first I want to say, if the, if the video was so offensive, why didn't the deputy general manager allow the, the video to play to the end? And why was there laughter from the board member David Alvarado and our deputy general manager during the video? And also, I want to comment on Gordon's statement. I, you know, I, I don't believe he actually believes that. I think he is saying that to protect the position that he's in. I think West County Wastewater District is broken. It's still broken. I think everybody at the top thinks everything is going fine. Lisa brought up the, the solar. Those solar panels, if 50% of them work, I would be surprised. They're all pointing in the right, wrong direction. There, half of them, or maybe not half, that might be exaggerated. A number of them have had the copper wire removed from them, from, from vandals, and those have not been repaired. The, the drives that operate them are obsolete, and so our, our solar system doesn't work. We have invested money in a vector spoils dump site that we've spent more than $200,000 on that still doesn't work. So we have projects, and we keep telling the public how wonderful things are and how well they work, and they're not. So let's just quit lying to the public.
Thank you. And if there are any more comments from our attendees, if you can please raise your hand. Okay, now I see, I will go ahead and unmute Tanya Williams. Tanya, whenever you're ready, your three minutes will begin, and you have been unmuted.
Hey, good afternoon to the board and to everyone on the call. Mine's going to be very short. I have been with West County Wastewater for over two, a little over two years. And some of the things that attracted me to West County Wastewater is the agency's mission, vision, and goals, and the direction the agency was moving towards. As I re-read the strategic plan, I reflected on the three words identified as the heart of WCW, community, distinction, and connection, and how we carry out our day-to-day operations by striving to be an agency that promotes service, progress, safety, and reliability, trust, and leadership. As leaders of this agency, I feel that we should be following the information that we're putting out to the public. In some of the board meetings, yes, it, it gets a little heated, and that's understandable that we, you know, we, we can disagree on things, but I think to be able, as leaders, we need to keep it professional. We shouldn't go back and forth with one another. We should allow others to speak without interrupting. I think, again, as the face of West County Wastewater, we should be putting our best foot forward and showing our communities that we are not just putting out words on paper and presenting it on our website, but also embodying those words and that, those documents and live by that. And so that's all I have, and thank you for allowing me to speak this evening.
Thank you. Next speaker is Karen Crowe. Karen, you have been unmuted, and you do have three minutes.
Thank you so much. Can everyone hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hi. Good evening, everyone. I recently separated from the district at the end of February, and I have a lot of comments about things that are not on the agenda, but I will save that perhaps for another time. I would like to ask the board to please re-review the committee meeting video. I watched it, and it wasn't my take on the video that Director Weiner was attempting to downgrade what the district is doing as far as clean and green and the carbon-neutral efforts. The video is another matter, but I don't believe it was his intent to, you know, slam the district, so to speak. So I would just ask that the board take that into consideration, you know, and possibly re-review the meeting, and I kind of agree with Jeff as far as my take on it when I watched it was that Deputy GM was not offended at the time. You know, it was kind of passed off as far as the video. Anyway, that's my comment. I would just ask that the board re-review the video. Anyway, that's my comment. I would just ask that the board re-review the video. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Are there any more comments from our attendees? If so, if you can please raise your hand. Thank you. I see Speaker Gordon Times.
Hi, I would just like to comment because my name was mentioned. And I would just like to, you know, say to Jeff that I've, I've always, always respected him. And I spoke with my heart in, yes, this agency is not perfect. But we are moving forward and we're making great progress. So I resent being called a liar. Take that for what it's worth.
My name, I believe I saw Aaron Weiner's hand. He put it down. I'm not sure if he still wants to speak or not. I thought I signed up.
I would, President Zapata, if it's the right time.
Yeah, I think our attendees are, again, from on the Zoom. Oh, actually, we see one more, but. Just so that way, Ms. Martinez, just so you don't miss him because he's on the panelist side and not on the attendee side. So just FYI, whenever you're ready, Ms. Martinez.
Thank you. Okay, so should we continue with Speaker Joe Nogapower? Okay. Joe, you have been unmuted. Whenever you're ready, your three minutes will begin.
Yes, thank you. Sorry, I did not plan to make a comment this evening, but. After hearing a few of the comments, I feel obliged to speak. Gordon was very diplomatic in his response to Jeff, Public Speaker Jeff, but in, in support of him. I just want to say I think that it's pretty, pretty presumptuous and honestly disgusting that somebody would. Come on and, and say that they think that somebody's lying and that they don't believe, actually believe what they're saying. When it was obviously very well thought out. So I just wanted to put that out there. And while there, there is a such thing as nervous laughter. And, you know, that was brought up a couple of times about our deputy G M and others that were laughing at the video. It was shocking that it was presented in a public meeting for others to see in the community. And there's a such thing as, as, you know, being shocked and then having that response of laughter. And I think that's what was going on. So I don't think it was that they were being complicit with the content. And as far as the profanity used, that's one thing, but. You know, someone who's, who's directly involved with some of these projects, like the Levy Project and Clean and Green. It was offensive to me that, you know, that, that the general tenor of the video was that. And I think General Manager Lisa said earlier that we're doomed, basically, that, you know, all of these. Efforts that we're, we're, we're taking, taking on are for naught. And, and that was, you know. Pretty, pretty discouraging to, to, I think, to many of us, to myself, definitely. Considering, you know, that's what we're spending our careers really focused on and doing. So it was disappointing to me at, at the least as, as a member of staff. So I just wanted to give my, my take on it. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any more attendees that wish to speak under public comment?
I think if we're going to the panelists, that I think we've got Aaron that wanted to say something.
Your three minutes will begin when you're ready.
Yes, thank you very much, Brenda and Presidents Zapata and Board Members and Staff. Yeah, I, I am not going to use anybody's name, but I will say that the former speaker who made those first remarks. We, we took very good care of him, you know, when he left the district. A year ago, and it's, it is disappointing to hear that kind of thing. But in, in light of that, you know, everybody's entitled to their opinions. I did want to say. That both of the projects that he mentioned are being addressed and they are being worked on as we speak. So some information that was fed to him by a current employee. You know, is just not the accurate information. So I, I did want to also piggyback on what, what. I'm blanking on who said it, but, but somebody mentioned that, you know, nothing's perfect. No organization is perfect because we're run by. We're run by people and people aren't perfect. And that's just the way it's going to be, but we're, we're, we're pushing as many levers and working on as many things as we can possibly. Do. The, the last thing I, I wanted to say was. You know, in regard to the video and certain other behaviors that we've observed over the last year or, or two years. It, it's just, you know, the example is set as, at the highest level, whether it's the electeds, whether it's the G M. Or, you know, right down to the line staff. And for anybody to do something, you know, an elected or otherwise, that would have gotten, you know, staff fired on the spot, terminated on the spot. Is not appropriate. It is not the way we need to lead by example. So I just wanted to, to say, say those words and. And again, thank Lisa for, and the executive team and everybody else for all the great work that is ongoing. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other comments, public comments from our panelists? If you can please raise your hand. Okay, seeing then raised, Mr. President, that is the end of our public comments.
My name, Clark. Thank you for that. So next year, I would like to ask Vice President Suddet again to serve as our presidentarian of this meeting. I think we should proceed as the General Counsel has outlined in her remarks earlier today. But before we get there, I'd like to review our, our rules of decorum. And how this meeting will be conducted in order to allow all members of the board, as well as the public, to have an opportunity to be heard and uninterrupted. First, under our board policies and procedures. The president is the chair of this meeting and is empowered to take all steps reasonably necessary to preserve that order. Last meeting, I was out of town, so Vice President Suddet served as the president for that meeting. While I was out of town, the committee meeting met. And at that committee meeting, I am usually the chair. And while I was out, the chair for that meeting became Director Weiner. So Director Weiner was the presiding chair for that committee meeting last week. So as chair or as president of either committees or the meetings. We have the authority to stop any recordings, any videos that are played. We can set the time, we can set the tone, we can change things allowed through, through the Brown Act. And without being overruled by the rest of the board. So again, we do have that under our belt. So at all times, the president has ever changed the times and again, being able to play or stop any recordings. Second, the decorum stability is required under both our board policies and procedures and our ethics policy. I want to be clear that I expected this board and any of our attendees to maintain decorum in general and civility to each other at all times. Civility means displaying respect for those with whom you disagree. Decorum means showing respect for the organization and the people it represents. And behaving in a dignified manner that reflects positively on the organization. And generally means avoiding displays of rudeness, ridicule, obscene, or profane language. Impatience or lack of respect for others or personal attacks. Our policies and procedures state, and here's a section of it, so I'll be quoting it. Board meetings should be governed by common sense and good taste. The presiding officer should take all steps reasonably necessary to preserve order at all times during the board meetings. Board members should conduct themselves in accordance with these rules and in such a manner as to avoid disrupting the meeting. End quote there. The purpose of these rules is to ensure that both board members and the public are able to participate in the process. Free expression of all points of view is an important democratic value. However, any speaker who has a floor should have the opportunity to complete their statement within a reasonable amount of time. Therefore, civility requires that we do not interrupt each other. I will set the reasonable time limits for each speaker and I will mute or have muted anyone who attempts to have, to interrupt a speaker who has the floor. Again, we don't want to interrupt each other as we speak. Part of the Brown Act or part of Brown Roberts Rules state, try to not mention somebody else's name. During the meeting because we don't want to have any back and forth. The moment you start mentioning somebody's name then becomes personal. We want to keep this to the issue at hand. And again, keep this everything on the up and up. And hopefully we want to be here the whole night, but we want to be able to give everyone that reasonable amount of time to speak. With that there. I would like to begin by stating that I have reviewed the materials provided by the general manager in connection with her allegations of violations of Director Weiner's censure. I have also reviewed the video of the I O E meeting. And the transcript of the video Director Weiner showed during that meeting, during last Wednesday's meeting. And I would like to first consider whether Director Weiner has violated the terms of his censure. General Counsel, will you please display on the screen the prior censure resolution? Yes, sir. Thank you. And as the General Counsel bring this up, I, I will note that the Board of Directors' policy and procedure states directors should deal with matters. Within the authority of the general manager exclusively through the general manager. Except as those matters may pertain to the functions of the board attorney. However, that rule is modified for Director Weiner by the prior censure resolution, which states amongst other things that. Director Weiner is prohibited from direct contact with General Manager Malek Sade. And instead should communicate with district's staff through the president of the board. This censure item is effective for one year, but may be reconsidered in January of 2022. And then the general manager's memo, this writes on page one, several incidents in which the Director Weiner contacted staff directly. And General Counsel, whenever you're ready to, to show that.
All right, does that appear right now?
Yes, I can see it. I'm hoping everybody else will see it as well. Please let us know if you're not able to.
Claire, we can see part of the resolution. Yeah.
Perfect. Yeah, the resolution is fairly large, so we might need to take it in pieces.
The, the portion and question, however, I believe is this item one.
Thank you. That is just what I read here as well. So I'll read it again. Director Weiner is prohibited from direct contact with General Manager Malek Sade. And instead, he should communicate with district staff through the president of the board. This censure item is effective for one year from the, the effective date, but may be reconsidered in January of 2022. We did not reconsider it back in January 2022, but we are reconsidering it at this time. So before I request a motion. Do any members of the board have any questions or comments on this item?
Um, sir.
Vice President Suddet?
Yes, sir. Just a point of order. I, did you want to move forward with this before you hear from Director Weiner? Or did you want to move to, to speak? Did you want to move with the board before you hear from Director Weiner?
I, I thank you for that. Director Weiner, I think we could, you know, you're part of the board. So you, if you have any comments, and then we can hear from the directors and it will make a motion and then speak on the motion itself as well.
Yes, sir. You, you will also need public comments, so.
Thank you. Director Weiner, would you like to state anything on this section here?
I have no comment.
No comments? Okay, thank you. All right, directors, anyone else have anything in regards to this particular section? Okay.
His hand is up.
Oh, Director Weiner, yes, your hand's up.
Yes, this is just a technical point. I am unable to keep the meeting stable on Zoom. While having my video displayed, so that is the reason that I do not have my video displayed. And only will be able to speak with the photo displayed.
Director Weiner, thank you for letting us know of that. We all know that we can get those technical difficulties. So thank you for letting us know. Director Weiner, if at any time you lose connection or are, are unable to, to hear us correctly. This is very important that you hear it all, because it has to do with you and we want to make sure that we give you the opportunity to, to speak. If you want to text me or, or, or communicate with, with me. So that we can stop the meeting if you're not able to communicate, so that we can give you that opportunity to log back in, in case you lose connectivity there. All right, Ms. Collins.
So, sir, before you move on, so I, I think that this is just a matter of, of reading. I don't think there's anything needed on this particular point.
Yeah, I just want to say that if anybody had any comments on this here, so the next step would be to hear or to see of our general manager's list. Of, of items that she believes that Director Weiner might have violated of, for his censorship.
I'll share that as well.
In, in relation to number one, correct?
In relation to number one, yeah.
Thank you.
And Ms. Collins is bringing this up now. This is the memo that our general manager sent to us. And here are the points that she makes detailing times that she believes Director Weiner. Violated the censure by directly communicating with staff. I don't know if anyone needs me to read these out loud, but I think we could see them here.
And I will mention that these are included in exhibit two to the. Proposed resolution that is attached to the agenda.
Collins, so this is part of the agenda packet.
I'm sorry.
Thank you. It looks like the first one was back in December of last year, December. The December 3rd, preceded by May 13th. May 31st, June 2nd, June 3rd. June 13. I'm not sure if there's another page or not, or is it just goes up to June 13? Okay, it looks like just the notes have it just up to June 13. Okay. Thank you. I guess before we have the, the directors, is there any other comments? General Manager, do you have any comments that you would like to make on, on your memo here?
Directors Zapata, I don't have any other comments. I can answer any questions. I think I've documented those multiple incidents.
Thank you, Ms. G M. All right, directors, any questions or comments on, on our G M's memo?
Public comment first, sir.
Yes, all right. Do we have any additional public comments, Ms. Martinez?
If any of our attendees would like to speak under this, if you can please raise your hand. Seeing none raised, we do not have public comment from our attendees.
All right, thank you, Ms. Martinez. Directors, any questions or comments on our G M's memo or that particular section of the censure?
Director, President Zapata?
Yes, Director King Maritha.
Yes, I do. I do have a comment. As far as this memo. This is my first time really seeing this memo due to my tech, you know, techno. this is my first time really seeing this memo due to my tech, you know, technical difficulties I had with my um, learning how to use my equipment. But um, I did get a chance to glance over um, just quickly and read some of the highlights that was presented a few moments ago. So I just wanted to uh, make that statement. This is my first time seeing this actual demo. This memo.
Thank you, Director King Meredith. Let me know if you have any questions on it, or if you want us to scroll up so you can continue reading some of the other points. Um. All right, if there's no questions in regards to the memo?
I believe um, Director Alvarado came off mute. I'm not sure if he had questions or not, or comments. Sir.
No, I'm fine. Thank you.
Okay. Um. Uh, sir. Uh. I I think my my sole comment in relation to this memo is that we spent a lot of time, effort and resources and money last year working with um, Director Weiner following the censure and we actually um, also took Director Weiner at his uh, word regarding his efforts to abide by the terms of the censure and also um, work towards improving his um, behavior is decorum. And just the, and this memo, if you read it, um, indicates that this is only a snapshot of some of violations. So not taking the uh, there was a comment made by by the staff earlier about the board setting the example. And that the staff has worked hard from the frontline workers to the executive team on upholding the principles that we all agreed to do. And that as the elected officers in the face of West County wastewater, that we also have that obligation to do the same. And if that it sends a certain message when we refuse, any of us refuse for whatever reason, or when we fail, even if we, I'll change the word from refuse, but when we fail to uphold same standards or higher standards, then we are asking the staff to uphold. So that is what gives me pause when I read through this. And when we have an incident as we did last week. I leave you with that. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice President. All right, directors, any other comments? I would see this uh, list here. Um. From our General Manager, uh, recording, it looks like staff uh, sending correspondence to General Manager whenever the censorship was broken. If there's no questions on it, uh, Director Weiner doesn't have anything further to add to it. Um, that we need a motion, uh, whether to entertain a motion on you know, what do we do with the violations of the this part of the censorship? Um, there in the board packet as well was a draft updated censorship. And I believe this is what has been shown on the screen now from our General Counsel. Um. So that the if, you know, I need a motion one way or the other. I whether we believe that Director Weiner has violated the first censure by repeatedly communicating directly with the GM and other staff since uh, last year, September, or or not. Um. And then from there, we figure out what the next steps of the censorship would be. Um. Do we have a motion there so that we can continue this conversation?
Make the motion that would give you the conversation. I mean, it's clear, the evidence is clear, so. I mean, there's not much to discuss here. Make a move. Thank you.
If I may, i- is that a motion to uh, find that Director Weiner violated the first sensor by communicating with the GM?
Uh, absolutely, it's that, that is the motion.
Thank you.
I I believe it's the highlighted portion, Ms. Claire.
That's correct.
Yeah.
All right, thank you, Director Alberta. We have that motion there. Uh, directors, we have a second.
Yes, President Sepeda, this is King Meredith, and I second the motion.
Uh, Director King Meredith, thank you for seconding that motion. We have a motion and a second uh, that the board hereby finds Director Weiner violated the first censure by repeatedly communicating directly with the General Manager and other staff since September fifteenth uh, twenty twenty-one. Um. Before we go on to a vote, uh, any further comments, Director Weiner, I see your hand up there. And and Director Weiner, just FYI, you you are on mute, so in case you're speaking.
All right, trying.
Oh, there we go.
Trying to speak. Uh, I have a question on process.
Uh, yes.
I um, I'm not going to participate in um, my censure, but I will have a comment at the end regardless of the outcome. And uh, would like to be given the opportunity after all of all is said and done to uh, make a statement.
Um, perfect. Yes, Director Weiner, you you have the opportunity to speak at any time. Uh, if you wish to hold your comment at the end of the sensor, uh, would definitely give you that time at the at at that time as well.
That will be my uh, desire.
Okay, perfect. Um, I will uh, remind you of that uh, as we get closer to whatever the end maybe, I don't know when this will be, but I'll I'll make sure to remind you so that when, so whenever you're ready to speak. Um. All right, directors, any other questions or comments on this particular piece of the censorship motion? All right, hearing none. Um, then um, since we, the first is the the finding, so uh, since we are finding Director Weiner violated the first censure with that motion, uh, Madam Clerk, if you can please take the roll.
Director Alvarado?
Yes.
Director King Meredith?
Yes.
Vice President Setit?
Actually, you can call Director Weiner. He he is eligible to vote.
Director Weiner?
No.
Vice President Setit?
Yes.
And President Sepeda?
Uh, yes.
Thank you. Motion passes.
Thank you.
All right, uh, thank you for the vote there. Um. Okay, uh, the next section uh, that we have uh, is looking at the item of the video. Um. Do we have any questions or comments on that particular piece before we ask for that motion?
And you want to call for, you want to call for public comment, or you want to just go for board comments, sir?
Um, yeah, we can ask for public comment if there's anything at this time as well before the director speak. Madam Clerk, do we have any further uh, public comments on the um, violation of section eight point two of the ethics policy in presenting that video?
And before you do, we should probably um, uh, I I'm not sure the public is aware what we are aware that there was another version of this video that was not laced with profanity. That was a so-called clean version of this video, yet this was the version that was chosen to be played.
Madam President, just to make sure that I understand you correctly, you're saying that there was, there's two versions of that same video that was played last week?
No, there was two versions, there was two versions available.
So two versions available, one with the profanity and one without the profanity?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
The version that was played was the one that was what that had the profanity.
Okay. Uh, thank you for that. And that, can I ask where was this other video found? Was it on YouTube or just by Googling it? Or did we have a copy of it?
Ms. Lisa can tell you.
Yeah, I can answer that. Um, President Sepeda, it was actually found um, by our district clerk who um, it came right up on YouTube with the video. So um, she wasn't looking for it, but it recommended it. So it was right there when you played that video.
Uh, thank you.
And she notified me.
I I I say that because that's important when we talk about ethics policy and whether I I think it it's it has a a bearing on uh, it it puts it into the right light when we talk about this 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 in its totality, sir.
Uh, thank you, Vice President Setit, and thank you, uh, Ms. GM uh, and Ms. Martinez for finding that video there. It sounds like uh, Facebook is listening, so. I care, but what is that? Um, all right. Then with that, if there's no other director comments on uh, in regards to the video?
Director. I'm sorry, Director?
Uh.
President Sepeda? If I may, I'm seen like the only one that didn't get a chance to see the video at this point. And I don't know how gross would it be to have it played again to see that and the clean version? If that's possible? If they're three minutes apart, if they run three minutes, is that something that we may be able to um, have done, or is this something that of the request that I'm requesting? It's not doable at this time.
President Sepeda, if I if I may interject for just a moment, we we um, unfortunately, we don't want to play that video again with the profanity.
Okay.
Uh, Director King, we can certainly, uh, King Meredith, we can certainly get you um, the transcript from the video.
Okay.
Um, or pull, but I prefer it has a lot of profanity and sexualized comments in it as well, so we prefer not to have to play the video again.
Okay, well taken. So if that can be sent to me.
And Director King Meredith, what we can do, uh, we can take a quick recess, uh, maybe like a five-minute recess so that we can get you that video so that you can watch it on your own.
Yes, on my phone. That'd be appreciated.
Yeah, I I don't, yeah, I agree. I don't think we need to uh, replay it. Uh, because then we'll be acting within what we're saying we shouldn't have happened to begin with, but it is available on our website because it is a public uh, meeting. Um, but I think we can give you that link so that you can watch it, so that you are uh, prepared uh, to to vote one way or the other on this finding.
Very good.
So maybe what we do, it is uh, six thirty-three. Um. Lisa, do you think, or or Ms. Martinez, would you be able to help Ms. Annie maybe sending
Yes.
the link over to Ms. King Meredith?
Yes, I'm doing that now, and I'll be sending it uh, to her phone so she can just watch.
Very good. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Then Director King Meredith and 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 board, if you wouldn't mind if we take a quick maybe a five-minute recess uh, to allow Director King Meredith to view that video so that she is uh, able to opine and and be able to properly vote on this item. Um, so if we can come back
So it's thirty-three after you want to just resume it at at twenty-two?
Uh, perfect, that works.
Yeah, perfect. So, okay.
If we can all come back at 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 twenty-two?
Hey, no objection here.
So what was that, Director Colorado?
I said no objection here.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate it.
All right, we'll see you all in a couple of minutes. Uh, please stand by.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, uh, directors, welcome back. Director, uh, King Meredith, hopefully you had an opportunity to watch that there.
Yes, uh, President Director Zapata, and I am breathtaking. Yeah. I did, and was very disappointed with it.
Right, um, we'll go into some comments here. Director Weiner, I see your hand up there.
Uh, yes, um, President Zapata. Now that I see how the process will go, I would like to make a, um, statement and then resign the meeting and allow you all to carry on. If I might.
Um, go ahead, Director Weiner.
Address to the board on the occasion of the censoring and censuring of myself. Colleagues, attendees, and staff, it is a sad day. The board and staff have come to censor and punish me because they don't like the fact that I question authority. It is that simple. This particular evening, they are declaring that I have somehow broken the board's policy for showing a video appropriate to the committee I chair. The video Savage World Governments for borrowing, uh, forbearing to oil companies' profits and products and not protecting humanity. First, I will speak a little about myself as the board majority and staff have continually misrepresented me. Second, I will quote the courts on the matter of free speech of public officials of which I am. And finally, I will speak to the specifics of the document titled Censure, published in the dead of night or early this morning, so that I could not seek legal advice or plan a response. My name is Harry Weiner. Because of it, bullies have bullied me since grammar school. I have not changed my name. I am seventy-four years old. I was successful at a career which did not exist when I graduated college. It is no exaggeration to say that I'm the oldest person who is officially associated with the district. It is no exaggeration to say that some of my fellow warriors against climate change board members were not potty trained when I took the graduate course entitled The Philosophy of Environmentalism. I am a lifelong learner. I have honorifics that certify I have learned, but not all knowledge is acquired from formal education. One thing is certain from my official learning, good science is all about questioning authority. One thing is certain from my experience in life, questioning authority is always fraught with danger, bullying, and retaliation. It is my opinion questioning authority is the primary responsibility of this board and every elected official in a democracy. It is my opinion this board has failed the public in not doing so. Acting on behalf of the authority to quell honest inquiry is a dereliction of duty and the majority of, of the board has been criticized by the civil grand jury for its failures in this regard. Today's meeting is just the latest worst example of board majority failure. I will now quote from some court cases which should have been considered by the board and staff before going through this unconstitutional and illegal exercise in censoring and censuring me for my speech. An elected official has a First Amendment right to attend meetings and address matters of public concern. So restrictions on an elected official's ability to attend meetings may infringe the mem- the members' rights. Degrassi versus City of Glendora, Ninth Circuit, two thousand, two oh seven, F three D, six three six, comma, six four six. However, if the member's speech is essentially self-interested with no public import, then it is not of public concern and not entitled to First Amendment protection. Degrassi, two oh seven, F three D, at six four six, quoting Rovey City and County of San Francisco, Ninth Circuit, Ninth Circuit, nineteen ninety-seven, one oh nine, F three D, five seven eight, comma, five eight four. Under the First Amendment, legislators are given the widest latitude to express their views on issues of policy. Since debate on public issues should be uninhibited, robust, and wide open. Bond versus Floyd, nineteen sixty-six, three eight five, US one sixteen, one thirty-five, eighty-seven, SCT, three three nine, Degrassi versus City of Glendora, Ninth Circuit, two thousand, two oh seven, F three D, six three six, comma, six four six. The Brown Act provides protection for any person, including an elected official who engages in public criticism of policies, procedures, programs, services of the agency, or acts or missions of the legislative body. A speaker may not be stopped from speaking because a moderator disagrees with the viewpoint they are expressing. Perry, Education Association, four sixty, US thirty-seven, one oh three, SCT nine four eight. See also Acosta versus City of Costa Mesa, Ninth Circuit, two thirteen, seven eighteen, F three D, eight hundred, comma, eight oh six. Rules of decorum that prohibited insolent behavior violated First Amendment. Limitations on speech must be reasonable and viewpoint neutral. In my opinion, the board should stop these proceedings immediately before putting itself in jeopardy of lawsuits on the matter of free speech and the exercise of board duty. Lastly, I have read the document enumerating what is pointing to be my continued failures to behave in the appropriate manner. I remind you of my opening remarks regarding the question of authority. Much of which it is said, which is said, I said, which it is said I said, is protected free speech and is objected to because it calls into question the GM's view of her authority or represents my opinion of her behavior and the behavior of the board. She has the benefit of a lawyer to capture arguments and reasons. I do not have an attorney, have not had days to compile a response to the document, which is obviously taking much time to make up. I will just comment on the first paragraph dated January twelve, twenty twenty-two, to characterize the entire document. January twelve, twenty twenty-two. During a discussion of the findings of the grand jury report, Director Weiner used discussion as an opportunity to spread lies, mischaracterize the authority of the general manager, and portray my performance as questionable and inconsistent with best practices. He also used the findings in the report to justify his repeated attempts to alter the delegated authority granted to me by the board. I did not lie, nor mischaracterized the grand jury report in an effort to portray her performance at all. The grand jury was very clear that they wanted the board to correct a district practice that did not conform to their standard of transparency. This, the GM refused to accept or do. Now to the heart of this entire successful effort to silence me, I quote. He also used the findings in the report to justify his repeated attempts to alter the delegated authority granted to me by the board. Isn't this the heart of being a board member and the heart of open debate? Altering the delegated authority granted me by the board. So this is my sins continues in this manner. All of it, I would characterize as, how dare you question? Authoritarians everywhere would be proud. I have no doubt that my statement will fall on the deaf ears of the board members who insist on punishing me for doing my duty as a board member. They certainly don't want to do this, to question authority, fight for their constituents, oversee the district. As the grand jury said, they want to take a hands-off approach, which is grand juries for not wanting to do their job. That is my final statement, and I will be leaving the meeting and allow you to carry on.
All right, Director Weiner has left the meeting. But that, directors, do, does anybody else have any comments on the issue at hand? All right, seeing none?
Uh, no, I, I do, I do. For the record, a President Zapata that deserves a response that corrects the record, President Zapata. You cannot let statements that are untrue stay on the record. Because much of what was just said, regardless of it being an opinion of someone, was patently untrue. It was self-serving and untrue. And it violated, again, your direct instructions not to call out names and not to denigrate anyone else. Especially not, he, he went against, he went straight for the general manager, again. Exactly what he said he wasn't going to do. Or that he claimed he didn't do, which was listed in the censure order that we're discussing tonight. So it deserves, as the president of this board, some kind of statement for the general public who will be viewing this at some point to call that out is much of what he said is untrue. You don't get to make, you don't get to make statements that say that he's the only one who knows anything. And the rest of us aren't doing anything to serve the constituents that we were voting, we were elected to handle, and he's the only one who knows policy. He's the only one who's here to serve the public, and the rest of us are just here, signing papers and shoping. I find it offensive. And it, it, it wasn't just self-serving, it was offensive. The general counsel knows nothing, general manager knows nothing, the executive team knows nothing. Director Weiner is the only one who knows anything out of everybody here. Deveras? Really? That deserves a statement, sir. So you can give it, or I can write one up in the next two minutes. It's up to you. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice President Sutcliffe. I mean, one of the things that I caught in there, you know, we don't want to go back and forth with, you know, I know he's not here, uh, and we're so we can't go back and forth, but we don't want to go back and forth, otherwise we're, we're never going to finish meetings. Uh, that is his personal statement. There was some untruths in there. One of them, he is not, uh, prohibited from speaking as, obviously, he just spoke for a couple of minutes. Um, so we're not censoring him from speaking ever at a board meeting or representing his constituents or from speaking out loud and having, even if, uh, what he may say might sometimes be in the minority uh, opinion, uh, he is able to speak, uh, regardless what, whether other individuals agree with it or not. Uh, that, we're not censoring, he is able to debate. Uh, he is able to speak, uh, and say anything he wants to say as long as we maintain decorum and stability. Um, as a public elected official, right, we can't censor anybody. Uh, we can't remove anybody from office, uh, within this type of board. Uh, so we have to allow those comments. We have to allow any comments, whether they be profanity, whether it be anything. But there's always consequences if that was to happen, if we don't maintain this ability and, and, and proper discourse as we run these meetings. Whether you are the chair or whether you are, uh, one of the other directors, and even a member of the public. Uh, everyone's allowed to speak and say anything they want to say, but again, it all comes with uh, a, a reaction. If somebody wants to say a profanity, uh, then we can stop them from uh, proceeding their comments by giving them a warning, uh, but they would have already said it. Um, same for the directors. Again, we have a code of conduct. We voted it in, we've talked about it many times. Uh, and we have to be able to guide ourselves with that, with any comments. We're not prohibiting any freedom of speech. Uh, if anything, I think that we've seen lots of that going around. Uh, last Wednesday, there was lots of it going around. Uh, but we have to, uh, act within the guidelines that we've given ourselves. Whether we like it or not, we're still part of this board. Uh, and there are guidelines that we've given ourselves. Um, there was a lot of other points that you made, uh, that I did not write down to be able to speak to them. So Vice President Sutcliffe, if you have any that you caught, um, let me know. But the biggest one that I saw was that we were prohibiting, uh, freedom of speech. And, uh, prior to this meeting, I spoke with General Counsel especially about that, making sure that anything that we did was not prohibiting freedom of speech. Um, but at the same time, freedom of speech, we have to keep in mind freedom of listening and who's on the other side that we may be able to disrespect by the words that we say or, or, or actions that we create, whether intentional or unintentional. Uh, whether individuals laugh at a comment, maybe out of fear or out of, um, not understanding what's going on, right? Doesn't necessarily make it right. Uh, he spoke a little bit about bullying. I have been there, and I'm there every single day of my life. As an openly gay man, I'm there. Um, so action that somebody creates, whether they know on purpose it's wrong, uh, we kind of have to walk in somebody else's shoes to know that. It takes a lot to walk in different people's shoes. Um, when I watched that video, the fact that one of our staff members had to apologize, right, that means that that person was being disrespectful. Even though that person might have smiled or laughed a little bit through it. Uh, because there were some parts of that video that were funny. Uh, except for the profanity. I don't use profanity on day-to-day. Uh, there's a lot of individuals that they use profanity. So we have to keep that in mind and be respectful of everyone regardless of what we personally may find uh, disrespectful. And so with that, we'll, we'll, I'll pause my comment here for now. I see our, our general manager. Uh, you have your hand up, Ms. Mallexa Day. Uh, we'd like to make a comment.
Yes, thank you, President Zapata. I, I did want to just make one comment, especially in response to what Vice President Sutcliffe had said about making sure that um, the record was clear. Um, I do want to state for the record, since there are people on the call as well, is that what's important here is that we're not discussing, um, uh, the statements made by, by Director Weiner about, um, you know, the questioning of authority. That this is not the issue at hand. The issue is that Director Weiner has questioned the authority and tried to remove the authority of the general manager post an investigation into his conduct, which is a different category. That makes that act retaliatory, potentially retaliatory. So that is a very important distinction. The board does question the general, the board is the one that delegates any authority to the general manager. So that is absolutely the role of the board. However, Director Weiner is doing it post-conduct into his actions does leave one to, to think it was retaliatory. Um, and that has one of the reasons in which he has been censured. So I think it's important to just put that on the record so that that's clear. And, um, President Zapata, a- as you know, And um, President Zepeda, a, as you know, I have to unfortunately leave the meeting, so I am going to be turning it over right now to Andrew Power, Deputy General Manager. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. General Manager, you have a great rest of your evening. Um, Andrew, thank you for joining us. Um, and if I could also add, there was one on the list, at least that you presented. Uh, Director Weiner contacted, which. You know, I, I did not want to have this conversation tonight, right, it's not, we've never had a great conversation when censoring one of the directors. Um, and in regards to this particular meeting on the censorship about communicating with staff. Director Weiner did email Madame Clerk directly asking her a question about tonight's agenda. Um, so.
Right, that wasn't included in my um, memo because it occurred after I'd completed my memo, sometimes it's hard to.
Yeah, but that one, that one was one that I was like, ah. You're, it's, you're literally talking about. The censorship and now you've been. Going against it and you're going to ask a question. Further adding to that list. So, uh, Lisa, thank you so much, you have a great evening.
President Zepeda, I think the other thing that I would like on the. List of clarification. Is this, this, this threat. Of wanting to sue because the board is doing something to, 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 um. Protect not only the board, the district and the community of this continuing behavior. And um, Director Weiner mentioning in his comments. That the board should rethink wanting to censor him because he may want to sue the board. And I will, and saying that the board is bullying him because we have found his behavior to be. A certain level of offensiveness, I just wanted, uh, General Counsel, just to, from our policy. If, if, uh, with the permission of the chair. Uh, could we just define from our policy what bullying is in our ethics policy, please?
Sure.
Is it proper, is it proper, Madam?
I'm sorry, is it proper for me to look up the definition of bullying right now?
Well, in this, in this context, just so everyone is clear what that is, where we have. Found some of the offensive behavior because it seems it's being. Twisted around the opposite way.
Um, if you give me a few minutes, I can look up our, the definition of bullying, although our definition of bullying, if, if memory serves, is relatively broad. Um, but may I just make a, a, a brief statement about sort of the role of the board and, and, and a little bit of a comment on the First Amendment?
Yes.
The, the board acts, uh, all legislative bodies act. Uh, through the will of the majority. Uh, and the opportunity each board member has is to participate in a robust dialogue with the other board members. And to try to persuade a majority of the board to vote. Uh, in concert with any, any of those members. Convictions. And the power of democracy is the ability for all of the elected members and the members of the public to be heard. And for the ideas to be debated and for the uh, idea that has the support of the majority to win out. Uh, and that's why we have majority uh, rule in, in a, in a democratic society, uh, with still. The ability of a minority to have their voices heard, uh, and to potentially persuade a, a majority to agree with them. Uh, that's one part of, of, I think, the, the underlying premises that we always work with in a democratic society and with democratic institutions like a public. Board in California. Um, the, the other thing I, I want to at least respond to a bit is this idea of, of censoring. So we're really talking about two different words here, okay? A censure, C E N S U R E, is a public uh, condemnation. Of another's acts. A censor, C E N S O R, is when you prevent someone from saying something or showing something, right? So a censored uh, program is something that might have, you know, bleeps taken out, let's say, or certain content isn't allowed. We are not talking about censoring, we are talking about censuring, which is expressing. Disapproval of and distancing oneself from the statements of someone else, okay? Yeah, um, so the censure, which is item one in the proposed resolution. Is a proposal for the board to distance themselves from the statements of one of its board members. And by publicly saying, we do not agree with this board member's statements, and we publicly disapprove of them, condemn them, and distance ourselves from them. And that is to indicate to the public that you are not endorsing this other board member's statements and you are not as a board, not as a public agency endorsing that. I just want to make sure that we're clear about that. He seemed to be talking a bit about censoring, preventing speech. And on, on this note, I just want to go back to my first statement, which is that every member of this board has an equal right to speak on the issues and debate the issues and to try to convince. Your fellow board members of the wisdom of your position. Um, a- and again, it's a fundamental precept. And no one here, except in certain circumstances, which I'm going to explain in one moment, gets to prevent these from speaking in general. But First Amendment is still limited by something called time, place, and manner restrictions. And you as a legislative body have the ability and the right to set reasonable limitations in order to ensure. Decorum and the processing of business. Okay, and so those time, place, and manner restrictions say you are allowed to debate, but you can't debate for seventeen hours. Because that would be inappropriate from a timing standpoint, so with respect to public comment, for example, we typically have a three-minute limit. There's a rule of reasonableness here, some issues require a longer debate, some issues don't. And it is the role of the chair and the rulemaking of this body to determine what the appropriate timeline is, okay? Place is where you do it, here, it's not really as much of an issue, but manner is the, is the final contextual issue here, right? And that's where this issue of decorum and stability comes in. And then as long as the ideas can be debated and fully aired, the manner in which they are done does matter. It reflects upon the integrity of us as an institution and the respect to which we give our, our constituents and the agency as a whole. And therefore, reasonable restrictions on things like profanity, on things like i- issues relating to civility, right? Civility means we're debating the issues and we're not condemning the people. Um, these are reasonable restrictions and in a, and even in a democratic society with, with First Amendment rights. We can still have reasonable time, place, and manner, um, restrictions, right, but the old adage and the thing you learn in law school is you can't yell fire in a crowded theater. Right, you can say whatever you want, but if you yell fire in a crowded theater, you create a panic and everyone tramples each other, then people get hurt. And um, this is not the same thing as fire in a crowded theater, but it is to the extent that in order to maintain the dignity of the, of the agency and in order to. Promote robust policy discussion, right, not personality discussion, but policy discussion. We do have to allow appropriate debate to occur. And you will get no endorsement from me of stopping debate unless it is disruptive or is otherwise. Uh, impinging upon the decorum of the entity. And so therefore. And I am surmising here, but at the last board meeting. Director Weiner repeatedly was interrupting Acting Chair Suddeth. And Acting Chair Suddeth called for him to be muted. And that's because he was being disruptive, I believe that was not because of the content of his speech. But rather because he was not engaging in what we consider a normal civil discourse, which is allowing the other person to finish speaking and then taking your turn. Again, I don't believe, based on my review of the, of the matter, that it was content-based, but instead it was about a disruptive situation. That is not the same as censoring the content of the speech, but instead a timing issue and the manner issue. Of when that person can speak in order to allow the discussion to occur. I'll stop there, I hope that was helpful, um, but, but um. There are a lot of legal references that, that Director Weiner made, I don't have any of those cases in front of me. Uh, but in general, um. Uh, regulating the time, place, and manner of this speech, as long as the content is neutral, right, you're not regulating what he says. But how, but how it is being presented so that we preserve civility, that is permissible.
Thank you. No, that, that was, that was very hope, very helpful and that's what we needed, thank you so much. Thank you, Chair Zepeda.
And thank you, Vice President Suddeth, for that question there. With that there, unless there's any other questions or comments, then I'll entertain a motion. And I believe.
Mr. President?
Uh, yes, Madame Clerk.
Um, I did receive, um, during this time, a, a public comment emailed to me. And so if I may, um, if I may read that out.
Uh, yes, please, and then we'll entertain the motion.
Okay, thank you, and I will start the three-minute timer myself. It reads, Dear District Clerk and members of the West County Wastler Board. As someone who knew former President and Director Leonard McNeil and his tireless efforts to create a board that is reflective of. And responsive to ratepayers, I believe that the initial censor, censorship of Director Weiner. Was overbroad and did not take into consideration the types of communications necessitated by his role on the board. As listed on the General Manager's memorandum, his communications were in furtherance of his duties. They were not designed to be violative of policies or anyone's rights. It seems that the litany of complaints are personal rather than professional. They are part of a pattern of deliberate alienation of Director Weiner that all viewers of the board meetings have witnessed. And they form the context in which his actions regarding the June sixteenth, two thousand twenty-two are currently being judged. Like all directors, Director Weiner has the right to question what may appear to be the over-expansion. Or usurpation of authority by one of its subordinates, including the general manager. The exercise in his rights should not have formed the basis for silencing him. Or to otherwise encumber his ability to carry out his duties as a director. I ask that the board use prudence in judging him and his actions, whatever the outcome. I personally applaud Director Weiner for his efforts to carry out his duties, sincerely, Tanya McBulliard. And I apologize if I did not pronounce that correctly.
Alright, any other co- uh, public comments?
Uh, there are no other public comments, if any of the attendees would like to speak under, um, public comment, you can please raise your hands. Seeing none raised, we do not have any further public comment.
Alright, uh, thank you, Madame Clerk. Um, Ms. General Counsel, would you please bring up the document, uh, with the suggested motion in case one of the directors? Yes, sir, uh, this is, uh, recital F in the proposed. Resolution of censure, can you see that? Uh, yes. Okay, and so, um, I, I just want to, if I can, if I can just point this out, if I may walk you through it. So, um, eight point two sets out that civility and decorum with, in all interactions with district staff should be practiced. So obviously a, a committee meeting with included staff. Uh, we then recite the, uh, use of the video. The statement here is that the boards had an opportunity to review the video and finds that the language used in that video was patently inappropriate for a public, for an official public meeting. Was offensive and lacked the decree of decorum expected of an elected member of the WCW board. And then that the board further finds that Director Weiner violated section eight point two of the ethics policy, which again is a section here. In presenting that video in a public meeting. And so the, the, the request, uh, for a motion would be to make this finding, would be for a motion to make this finding. Or if you want to amend it in any way. And I can edit this on screen if that would be helpful to the, uh, board. Thank you, Ms. General Counsel. Uh, Directors, this is a, uh, proposed. Uh, motion, if anybody would like to either make this motion or a, uh, an alternate motion there.
So. I believe, I believe that the writing, uh, that's listed. Absolutely tells the story of where we're going with this, so.
Yeah.
I make the motion.
Uh, Director Alvarado, thank you for that motion, uh, Directors, we have a second.
Yes, President Zepeda, I would like to make the motion, second the motion.
Alright, Director King Meredith, thank you for the second, so we have a motion and a second. Uh, the motion reads, the board further finds that Director Weiner violated section eight point two of the ethics policy in presenting that video in a public meeting.
This one.
Alternate?
Uh, well, I, I think the clarification should be, if that's going to be the motion, I think we actually need to just spell out. Um, the video. What the video is.
The name of the video.
General Counsel, so the video, um, at the June fourteenth IOE. Committee meeting, so I think you need to identify the video in the motion.
Um, is there a name, uh, by which I can call it?
Ms. Brenda, is there a name to this video?
Um, let's see here, one moment. Because. It's called, uh, Net Zero by Two Thousand Fifty, and it's by Honest Government.
Yeah, so I think we should say that because the motion is going to stand on its own away from this paragraph.
Alright, I'm sorry, let me pull up my Word version of this so that I can edit it, and I will reshare it in one moment.
Sure. Uh, Director Alvarado, is that okay with you?
That is fine.
Thanks.
Alright, um. A three-minute video. Is this right? Net Zero by Twenty Fifty?
Correct.
And what was the, sorry, what was the additional language you stated?
Um, it's, it's by Honest Government ad, that's what it's titled.
Yeah.
And President Zepeda, if I may make the comment to add on to Director Suddeth. And to put in peripis that it was shown the, uh, vanity. You know, we have, as you mentioned, one was a clean version and the other one was, was, um, vanity.
Yeah, I, I think that that should go.
Yeah.
That should go this, the, 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 second to the last sentence should mention that, Ms. Claire, right before we say the board further finds. I think we should say that. The board learned, the board subsequently learned that there was a. A clean, quote-unquote, clean version. Of the video available, but however, Director Weiner chose to show. This, uh, version. The profanity-laced version, I don't know.
Would we be?
Because that's how to find you. Excuse me?
Yeah, this is your, your alternate motion, so I wanted to see if.
No, no, my, 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 no, my motion is just to clean up where it says, um. Violated section eight point two by presenting the Net Zero by Twenty Fifty video, so instead of saying that video. So take out the word that, Ms. Uh, Claire, and put the name of the video, Net Zero by Twenty Fifty.
Um, I'm sorry, uh.
The last sentence, the last sentence.
Oh.
You have the word that, so you would say. The title. The Net Zero by Twenty Fifty. Yeah. There you go. That's the, the only, I, I, the other one's not part of the motion, the other one was just cleaning up the document. The only change to the motion is to add the Net Zero by Twenty Fifty video. And David accepts the revision.
Director Alvarado, you accept that, that, um, friendly amendment?
I do, thank you.
And Director King Meredith, do you accept your, do you accept it as a secondor?
Yes, I do.
Thank you. And my, my only question is on the, the word chose. Uh, however Director Weiner chose to show a kind of lace version. He's not here to ask it, but I don't know if he chose, I don't know if he knew there was an alternate. Uh, can we maybe say however Director Weiner showed? Yeah, there we go without this, because I don't, I don't know if he chose or not, I don't wanna misspeak, because that. He might have realized, I mean, if. If Facebook, uh, was following Ms. Martinez, it was probably also following him. Uh, it probably would have given him different options, but we don't know that, so I just wanna make sure that we don't misspeak, so however Director Weiner showed the profanity-laced version. I think that speaks more to what we have now, because we can't ask him if he chose or not. Um, but with that there, the, the, the motion is, the board further finds that Director Weiner violated section eight point two of the ethics policy. And presenting the Net Zero by Two Thousand Fifty video in a public meeting. Um. We have a motion and a second. Uh. Any further comments on this before we go to a vote? Ms. Martinez, any further comments, eh, any further, uh, public comments on this section?
Any of our attendees wish to speak? Uh, if you can raise your hand. Seeing none raised, we do not have any comment.
I think Ms. Martinez, then with that, Ms. Martinez, if you can please take a vote.
Director Alvarado?
Yes.
Director King Meredith?
Yes.
Vice President Setas?
Yes, ma'am.
And President Zabeda?
Yes.
Thank you, motion passes.
President Zabeda, if I may? Uh, yes, please. The, so then the next step, um, now that the findings have been voted on by the board, the next step would be to consider the imposition of. Or the, the, um, approval of a censure, which is a statement, uh, of disapproval. Um, and the other items that are listed here, and, and, um, if you'd like me to, I'm happy to walk through. On an item-by-item basis, um, we could do a vote on each item, or we could just, uh, ask if there are any edits or objections. Which might make this process go a little bit faster, but it's at your discretion, Mr. Chair. Uh, Ms. Collins, yes, please, if you wouldn't mind reading through them, and then I think we could just take it all as one. Okay. Um, unless there's anybody that has any changes to it. Or objections? So, so if I may, then, okay, so the first item is an apology, uh, it says, the board of directors condemns and does not endorse the actions of Director Weiner described above. The board on behalf of W C W hereby apologizes to staff and to the members of the public for these violations of policy and the first censure. The board hereby requests that Director Weiner prepare a written apology. Are there any edits or objections to item one? Hearing none, I'm gonna proceed to number two unless otherwise directed, Mr. Chair. Item number two is censure. Based on the findings described above, Director Weiner is hereby censured for violating the board ethics policy and the terms of his prior censure order. Resolution number two thousand twenty-one dash fifteen. In connection with this censure, the board imposes the limitations below on Director Weiner. Are there any questions, objections, or edits to this paragraph?
Um, one edit. Can we add the word again? In front of violating second line?
Here?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, are there any comments or objections to that edit or the remainder of the paragraph? Okay, hearing that, I'm gonna move on. Now, I, I will just point out again, the board does have the authority as a legislative body to set the rules of its, uh, of the conduct of the legislative body itself. It cannot prevent the director from attending meetings or speaking at those meetings. However, it is a matter of grace, not of right, to, uh, attend, for example, or to be appointed to committees. Um, and, and the board may set reasonable limitations in order to, um, achieve, uh, valid. Uh, governance objectives, so. Uh, we start on item number three with respect to no direct communication with staff. This is a derivative of the prior, uh. The prior, uh, resolution, two thousand twenty-one fifteen, but provides some clarification. Uh, and so I'd like to read it and explain these pieces. So, no, no direct communication with staff. As mentioned before, board members have the right to attend every board meeting. They were elected, in fact, to do just that, uh, and at those board meetings, staff is present, and so while a prohibition on speaking outside of board meetings. Uh, may be appropriate, uh, at board meetings, it's really not possible. Um, and so it states here, except at Brown Act meetings, which are board meetings or committee meetings. Director Weiner is hereby prohibited from direct contact with, and this is in order to be very clear, meaning speaking to, emailing, texting, calling, or otherwise directly communicating with. General Manager Malik Zadeh or any other W C W staff member. Instead, Director Weiner shall communicate with any W C W staff through the president or acting president of the board. This is very similar to what's happening now. There is one, just item I wanna point out to you is that there are administrative matters, and this is an issue that's come up over the last ten months. And the question arises as to whether or not Director Weiner should be permitted to contact staff in connection with administrative matters such as. Uh, where is the meeting, uh, am I registered for this event, et cetera? The board has previously taken the position that there should be no communication except through the president, uh, but that's an issue for the board to consider. This would provide that they can't, that no communication, including administrative or routine matters, could be, um. There could be no communication of the sort, it would ha- everything would have to go through the president.
Do we need to put our designee after General Manager Malik Zadeh? I know it says, or other W C W staff member, but I just wanna be very clear, like right now. Um, Sir Andrew, is there designee? Do we need to put that here?
My, my sense is that that would be covered by any other W C W staff member, but if it would assist you in, 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 uh. Not assist you, but assist the reader in clarifying it, I'm happy to in- insert that.
It, it would assist this reader, but I don't know, uh, Sir Andrew? What is this? What would assist you guys? I, I, I'm just covering the bases, because.
I think one of the questions I would have with this, with such a designee is, is are we talking about anybody serving for her or just another staff member?
No, anybody serving for her. Serving in the capacity of General Manager. Because General Manager is, uh, is called out specifically, not just.
How's that, any act, acting?
Will that work? I'm, I'm asking Andrew.
It is, it's fine, it's fine with me, it certainly works, you know, it's, uh, the board, the board's choice what they wanna put in there, how specific.
Yeah, well, he's found a way to go around every one of the ones we put in here, so I'm just trying to make sure. President Zabeda, our, um, Director King Meredith, Director Alvarado, what do you think?
That works for me.
Yes, it works, it works for me, and it makes a lot of sense, because we sometimes do have acting general managers like we have like tonight. And to have that to be in place, yes, that stops him from interfering, yes, I agree.
Yeah, I think the more specific we can be, the better.
Thank you, General Counsel.
All right, uh, Mr. President, if, if I may, continue to the next one. All right, thank you. Item four, uh, this is also from the prior censure. No officer positions, again, uh, being, serving as an officer is a matter of grace, not of right. Um, and this provides that Director Weiner is hereby prohibited from holding the positions of president or vice president. Are there any comments or, uh, edits or objections to this item? Okay.
Can you put it in bold?
I'll take that as a rhetorical question.
It was rhetorical.
Um, item five is no general manager employment decisions. This is also, uh, a holdover from the prior censure, although it's been made a bit more specific here. No general manager employment decisions. Director Weiner is hereby prohibited from participating in employment-related discussions and decisions involving General Manager Malik Zadeh. Throughout the term of her employment with West County Wastewater. Are there any questions, comments, or edits to this paragraph? Okay, hearing none. Item six is no committee membership. Uh, this, uh, was not previously part of, uh.